Okay, we'll call this December 12th council meeting to order. And I would like to acknowledge that we are on the unceded lands of the Mi'kmaq. Let's stand for the singing of "O Canada."
O Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Okay, record of attendance. Everyone's here and councillor Hatfield is with us virtually. No absent with regrets. Any declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? You can declare at the time of the agenda item. Approval of the agenda. Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Your worship.
Yes, sir.
There is an item on the agenda that ought to be on a water utility agenda. So leave it to council whether you wish to deal with it on this agenda or to have a special water utility meeting immediately afterwards. And it is the grid letter of support for the water transmission main assessment. That would be a water utility issue.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, anyone? All those in favor? Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, so this evening we have a presentation and it's our audit report with Grant Thornton. Welcome Gloria Banks. Dawn Grant Thornton. I have to get that right. It was Thorn Riddell when I started there. That's how long ago.
That was a while ago.
It was a while ago.
Wow. Lots of different names over time, hasn't it?
Yes.
Excellent. Well, thank you for having me this evening. I did meet with your audit committee on Tuesday of this week. And so we've been through the statements in detail. So I'm going to give you a high level overview tonight of the financial results for March 31st, 2024. But please feel free to ask any questions that you may have. So the consolidated financial statements, I'll just remind you, is an accumulation of all of the town's operations. So it'd be the town operating fund, the town capital fund, the town capital reserve and the town operating reserve. So that all gets added together. And then we bring in your share of the controlled entities that you have influence over. We call them your subsidiaries. And that would be the Yarmouth International Airport Corporation, Yarmouth Area Industrial Commission, Yarmouth County Solid Waste Management Authority, the Yarmouth and Canadian Shores Tourism Association, Mariner Center Management Authority. And this year, for the first time, the Mariner Center Wellness Fund, which is the organization that was created to fundraise for the Mariner Center expansion. It is controlled and operated through the Mariner Center itself, but you ultimately have control of that as well. So those are all the entities that are added together in these financial statements. And I'm going to start on page one of your report. And this is our independent auditor's report. So this is our letter to you. And so this is a clean audit opinion. We did not find anything while we were doing our audit, which would cause us to have to modify the report itself or to restrict its use. So these are the financial statements for March 31st, 2024. In our opinion section, the small second paragraph, in our opinion, the company consolidated financial statements present fairly in all material respects. The financial position of the town of Yarmouth as at March 31st, 2024, and the results of its operations and its cash flows for the year then ended in accordance with Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards. So that's our official opinion in that one little paragraph. Then we have another paragraph, which is called the basis for opinion. So we do have to follow Canadian generally accepted auditing procedures when we do your audit, which means that we have to make sure that we've properly done a plan. We've implemented that plan and we've assessed the results after the audit is completed. And we believe that the audit evidence that we obtained through that process is sufficient and appropriate to provide an opinion for our opinion, for a basis for our opinion. We do have an other matter paragraph. So at the very back, we do include the individual statements for the water utility. And they are additional information. They wouldn't be required under the Canadian standards to be included in your financial statements. But these statements do go to the UARB and they do want to see the water utility separated from these consolidated statements. So we do include them at the back. But we do say that they are not required as part of the normal audit. Then the responsibilities of management and those charged with governance for the financial statements. So it is your management's team's responsibility to make sure that they have a system of internal controls that works throughout the year to make sure that the financial data is properly accumulated. Their whole goal is to make sure that when we get the financial information to do the audit, that they would be free of material misstatement. And that also is our goal at the end of the day is we want to make sure that the statements that we're presenting are free of those potential errors. Also, management has to make sure that these financial statements are in accordance with Public Sector Accounting Standards, framework that they fall under. And then they also are required to do what we call a lookout test. So that's 12 months into the future to look out to say, do we have enough assets that we could pay out our liabilities if disaster occurred and we needed to do so? So management does that quick test each year. And then those charged with governance, which is basically the audit committee and ultimately you as council, are responsible for the oversight of those processes. Not the day-to-day workings, but just to make sure that you're comfortable that management has the appropriate processes in place. On page two, so this is our, us as auditors, these are our responsibilities. Our goal is to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of that material misstatement. And while reasonable assurance is a high level of assurance, it's not 100% guarantee that there might not still be an error. Normally that would occur if something was going on and it was found to have fraud in the future. But in order to get our risk as low as possible, we do these items that are in the bulleted points. So we look at where could there potentially be an error in the financial statements? And we consider that to be a high-risk area. So we audit all material balances, but we spend more time auditing those areas that have the highest risk in them as we want to make sure that we've covered off all the potential errors. We also have to look at your internal control systems. We don't audit them. We don't give you an opinion on them. But we have to understand how they operate because that's where the financial data comes from. We look at all of your accounting policies. First of all, we want to make sure the ones that you've chosen are in accordance with Public Sector Accounting Standards. And then the ones that you've chosen that you do follow on a day-to-day basis. We also have to make sure we conclude that we can agree with management's assessment of that going concern assumption, which we do. You're in great shape, so there's no worries there. Then we evaluate the overall presentation of the financial statements. So the first four or five pages are numbers, but then there's 20 pages of notes. And all those notes are supporting the financial data that are in the first few pages. So we have to make sure that those notes hold together and really support what's in the financial numbers. And then because all of the controlled entities are brought in at their proportionate share, we have to make sure that appropriate audit procedures were done on each one of those controlled entities as well, which we do. And then we're required to communicate with those charged with governance. So we meet with your audit committee prior to doing the audit and at the completion of the audit as well to talk about the results, which we have done. Be dated today if council approves them tonight. Page three is management's responsibility. So under Public Sector Accounting Standards, it is a requirement that the financial statements are taken responsibility for in writing. And so this is their page that they go through. And again, this is a standardized wording. It isn't something that we've created. It's consistent with what's in your industry. So this is the page that they take responsibility for. And I might've gotten them out of order. It might've came before our audit report in your package. Not sure if it was page two or page three, but this is their page. Okay? So page four is the consolidated statement of operations. So these are your revenues and your expenditures for the year. And again, remember it's all of the town's operations plus your proportionate share of each one of those subsidiaries. So you can see that we show a budget column and an actual for 2024. And then we show the comparison for 2023. So the one thing I'll point out is these will look very different than what you're normally seeing when you're presented from management on a regular basis. Because what you will see is your operating fund for the town only on those presentations. So that's the budget that you would set at the beginning of the year for your rate-setting purposes. So we have actually done another set of statements. They're called the non-consolidated, unaudited. And in those financial statements, your operating fund, you always budget for a break-even position or a little bit of a profit. And so this year, you actually generated a surplus in your operating fund of $89,000. That $89,000 gets automatically transferred over to your operating reserve. As a requirement by the Department of Municipal Affairs, you're not supposed to have any annual surplus in your operating fund. It gets transferred over. If you had a deficit in your operating fund, it would have to come back out of the operating reserve. But for the last few years, you have been very close to your budget. So your revenues and your expenditures on a non-consolidated operating fund basis were in really good shape. They were very close to their budget. These numbers look very different because we've brought in all those other entities and your capital grants and all kinds of things. So it makes it a little bit different.
So that's, that's why under actual, we're in deficit?
Yeah.
But we're not really in a deficit?
On your non-consolidated operating fund, you had a small surplus, which is basically what you budget for. That's your goal, is to not make a lot of money in your operating fund, but you know, to break even. And so you did a very good job on your operating fund. This brings in things like amortization, which is a little bit different. The accretion expense, all kinds of different things come in here. But the biggest reason that you're ever in these statements, you're going to have either a deficit or a surplus, are those years that you have big capital grants. Because the things that's very unusual about capital grants for you guys is that it comes into revenue when you spend it on a capital project. So you have it in your revenues, but it's not in an expenditure yet because you set that up as a capital asset and you just depreciate it over time. So you're going to see your operations go like this. And in years when you don't have a lot of capital grants, you will have a much smaller number or a loss. But years when you have big capital grants, you're going to have a profit. Okay? That's kind of big picture where we are. But if we look at it from the perspective of the budget to actual, even on a consolidated basis, you did a really good job in your budget compared to your actual. So you budgeted for $23,631,000 and you came in at $22,789. So you're about $800,000 less than your budget on $23 million. That's still a pretty, pretty good number to be at. But in terms of the things that have changed from the prior year, you can see that your top line, your biggest revenue item is your tax revenue. You budgeted $12,507, you came in at $12,509. So you're bang on your budget when it comes to your tax revenue, which is your biggest number. And you're up $1 million over the prior year. So you did not increase the rates for 2024. So all of that increase comes from increases in assessments, which comes directly from PBSC. So you have an increase of $1 million in your revenue, which is good. If we look just two lines down, so services provided to other governments, you are ahead of your budget. You budgeted 1.2 million, came in at 1.5, and last year was 9.24. So you signed a new cost-sharing arrangement to provide protective services to other local governments. And that saw you recovering more from those operations, more of your expenses than you had recovered in the past. So you even did a little bit better than your budget. And then if we look down a couple more lines, conditional transfers from other governments, budgeted $2,295,000, came in actual at $845,000, and last year was $2,860,000. So this is the line that's always going to keep you going like this. Those are those grant numbers. And the grant numbers really depend on what you're spending on. So for example, last year, you brought in revenue of $2.8 million. $1.4 million was for the ferry terminal. You spent the big expansion down there and $800,000 on trails. So those are the two numbers that make that number really big last year. Whereas this year, you had budgeted to do a bunch of projects, but they didn't actually happen. They're happening now more than during the year. But in the $845,000, you did spend $223,000 or you brought in revenue to cover off your trails expenditures of $223,000. And then also you had some money for the bus and equipment that you got grants for. So that's why it's lower than the prior year. And so next year, it's going to go back up again because you're going to have more grant revenue for the projects that you're actually doing right now. And then if we look down a couple more lines, interest looks unusual. You budgeted $93,000, you came in at $653,000, and last year was $286,000. So why the budget is so low is because a lot of the interest is earned in your operating reserve and your capital reserve, and they don't budget. They don't have a budget for revenues and expenditures like your operating fund does. So that's the reason why you're different from your budget. And the reason that you've increased over the prior years, you're going to see on the next page, is as a group, you had a lot more cash during 2024 than you did during 2023, and interest rates are strong. So you've earned a lot of money just off of those amounts sitting in your, in your bank accounts. So in total, like I said, you budgeted $23,631,000 and you came in at $22,789. On the expenditure side, you had budgeted $22,627,000 and you came in at $23,809,000. And the prior year was $22,208,000. So you're up about $1.6 million over the prior year and about $1 million over your budget in these categories. So there's a couple of things in there. If we just look at the general government services, you can see your budget was $1,911,000 and you came in at $2,821,000. And so the reason why the budget is lower is because of that asset retirement obligation from the prior year. If you remember, we booked almost $3 million as a capital asset, and that is now being amortized. And that wasn't budgeted for. That's the biggest reason for the difference in your budget. Being up over the prior year, you'll recall probably that there was a lot of maintenance that needed to be done here in the building and specifically a significant amount was spent on the elevator maintenance. So that's the reason why we see an increase in the expense. Under protected services, you budgeted $5.5 million, came in at $5.4 million. So you're actually a little bit lower than your budget. And last year was $4,877,000. So you're up about $600,000. Most of that increase is due to the RCMP contract. So there was two pieces. There was a retro for the RCMP. So you paid $250,000 for a retro. And then of course, all of the salaries and the costs related to that were also up during the current year. And then if we just go down to environmental development services. So, sorry, environmental health before we move on to environmental development. Environmental health is up about $233,000. So when we consolidate the Yarmouth County Solid Waste Management Authority, it spent a significant amount of money on SAL4 and therefore its amortization expense is higher than the prior year. So that's why we see an increase in environmental health. And then under recreation and cultural services, you can see $2.8 million was your budget, $3 million is actual. So a little bit higher than your budget, but up from $2,664,000 of the prior year. So increased by $381,000 over the prior year. So the Mariner Center saw some increases in its expenditures during fiscal 2024, unplanned expenditures. So that's why it's higher than its budget. And in general, at the town as well, your recreation services were increased during the year this year. So what happens in total, you have a plan to have an annual surplus of $1 million, mostly driven from that capital grant number. You had planned to bring in $2.2 million. Without that, you would have been at a $1 million loss. And so, which is very comparable to where you ended up. So the $1 million loss is basically because you had the lower amount in your conditional grants this year. And last year had a profit of $696,000. So then we have a couple of what we consider to be unusual items. You're going to have disposal of capital assets each year. So this year, you had a small gain. You did dispose of a couple of vehicles that were fully depreciated. So everything that the proceeds were resulting in gain because they had no net book value left. Then you can see, if you recall from last year, the loss on change in proportionate controlled entity is $1,025,000. So that was last year. You disposed of or sold 1/3 of your 50% ownership in the Mariner Center. And you brought in the municipality of Argyle. So basically you sold 1/3 of, 1/2 of the assets for a dollar. So that's why you had that loss last year. Book loss, it wasn't cash loss, it was just an accounting transaction. So at the end of the day, your annual deficit this year is $955,000 and last year was $641,000. So you had accumulated surplus at the beginning of the year of $81,432, and you end the year at $80,476,000. If we turn the page over, you'll see that that number's also at the very bottom of this page. So $80,476 is the accumulated surplus. So the thing I like to point out is because you'll often probably have questions from residents and you have $80 million in surplus. But if you look at the number rate above that, $78,666,000, that's what you've invested in your infrastructure. So it's all not just sitting in your bank account. It's been invested to buildings, trucks, all of your equipment that's all over the town that you used to provide services with is your net book value of those assets are $78 million of that $80 million in surplus. So we just look at the top. What we call financial assets are those that are readily convertible to cash. So you can see at the end of this year, you had $11,430,000 in cash. And you had last year, $9,770,000. So you're up $2.3 million. Of that $11,430,000 though, $6,752,000 of that 11 is already designated. It's been given to you for a purpose and you must spend it in that purpose in the future. We call that deferred revenue. Those are grants that you've been given that you're going to spend on your projects in the future. Okay? So 11 less 6, so you really have $5 million. That's the town's savings, I guess you could say. Your taxes receivable are in great shape, $579,000. Your sewer and water rates receivable are very consistent year over year. You do have a large receivable at the end of March from the provincial government. So the $1.1 million, that was for the grant in lieu from last year as well as your municipal financial capacity grant, which was received over the summer. Whereas in the prior year, it would have been received prior to March 31st.
That one doubled?
Pardon me?
Is that the one that was doubled? They doubled for two years.
The municipal financial capacity grant was doubled two years ago, yeah? You got it one, no, one year or two years? So you gave a double amount.
Do you remember that, Jerry? Yes. Yeah.
Oh, I was, okay.
Yep.
Yep. Okay. And then your other receivables are fairly consistent year over year. There weren't any significant changes. There's a little bit more in terms of what is owed to you from other local governments because of that change in the cost-sharing arrangement. So there was a billing that was done at the end of March, which was collected after March. So your total non-financial, or your total financial assets are $15,616,000. On the liability side, there aren't too many significant changes, but the due to the federal government and its agencies is the amount for the fourth quarter of the RCMP contract. The due to the provincial government and its agencies, the $214,000 is your final payment for housing. If that change in that agreement, then you won't have future amounts for housing that you have to expend money on. So that's the final payment for that. Due to other local governments, $578,000. And that's the amounts that you would owe the municipality of Argyle and the municipality of Yarmouth for you have a shared recreation contract with the municipality of Yarmouth. And then this year, you contributed to the municipality of Argyle for their track and field. So there's some amounts that are in there.
So if this is the, if this is the last payment for housing?
Yep.
And we'll all do a happy dance. This was, this was amazing. Where does education fall? It doesn't fall under this one because we're still paying for education.
You mean the amount that you paid to the Tri-Canoe National School Board? Yes. So there was no outstanding payment at the end of the year. You had paid your full amount.
Okay.
But that's the one thing that's different in these statements. If you go look at your non-consolidated operating fund.
They're different. I'm used to those.
Because you collect on behalf of another organization. So we actually, for accounting purposes, through these statements, we have to actually back out that payment. But you were fully paid up on your.
Perfect.
Yeah, there was nothing outstanding at the end of the year for that one.
Thank you.
Yep.
You guys, if anyone has questions, just jump in without even, just let me know. I'll turn you later on.
The asset retirement obligation, $2.9 million. So this was from the project that was done last year where you had to look at all your assets to say, what are the costs associated with having to retire them? And so $2.9 million is the amount that's on the books for 2024. So you're going to see a big change in that number next year because you have subsequently sold the high school building, which had the largest portion of this number related to it because of all the work that was going to be needed to fix that up before you could sell it. So that was set up as an asset and a liability last year. In 2025, you will see that number come down significantly. Your payables and accruals are fairly consistent year over year. There was nothing new or unusual. We do look at them for subsequent payment. Other post-employment benefits, so that is the sick leave accrual and the retiring allowance that you have for your employees. And not a big change year over year. The deferred revenue number, that's $6.7 million. That's the number I said that is the cash that you've been paid, but you have to spend in the future. So there's a couple of big items in there. $2.5 million you took in this year that you are going to turn around and give for the Mariner Center expansion. It was money that was given to you. You received $1 million for the wastewater treatment plant, which you're now spending because it's under construction now. You had received $662,000 for the Sustainable Growth Fund money. And then also another donation was made for the Mariner Center of almost $1 million. Some of it will be Mariners on Main, some of it will be the Mariner Center itself. And then also you bring in your share of the other entities. And the Mariner Center had received their $4 million from the provincial government, and that hadn't been spent. So it's deferred on their books as well. So those are all the things that are in that deferred revenue number. Again, it's cash you've been given. You're going to spend it in the future on those specific projects. And then your long-term debt of the town of Yarmouth was actually fully paid out this year. You only had $166,000 left last year, and so you paid it out. So the town actually has no long-term debt. The $89,000 is your share of the Yarmouth Area Industrial Commission. They borrowed money during the year to do leasehold improvements at the facilities. So that's your share of their loan. So you have total liabilities of $13,806,000 and you have your net financial asset position of $1,809,000. So still a very strong position. It has gone down a little bit, and it will go down in years when you spend more on your capital assets. But it's still a very positive number. Then below the line, what we call non-financial assets, you ended the year intangible capital assets with a net book value of $78,347,000. And so the things that you spent your money on this year, you spent $3.5 million on capital assets this year, almost $1 million on trails, $240,000 on roads. So Southeast Street and Whipple were the two ones. And the trails were the phase five and phase eight of your trail expansions. $489,000 on sidewalks for the Harrington area. You did buy a new plow truck and you put a deposit on two new buses. As well, you picked up the share of the SAL4 at the Yarmouth County Solid Waste Management Authority. And that was a little over $700,000. You did also sell, two things I mentioned before, the 2008 salt truck and a snow blower from 2015. And so of your tangible capital assets, so your net book value is $78 million, but your original spend on all of the buildings and all of the equipment was $138 million is what was originally invested in the capital. And it's been depreciated to date down to the $78 million, leaving your total accumulated surplus of $80,476,000. So those are the two most important pages. As I mentioned, I did go over the details of all the other notes As I mentioned, I did go over the details of all the other notes and schedules with your audit committee, but those two tell the story of your year. So if you have any other questions.
Questions, anyone? Can you repeat what you just said? Because I don't do numbers. Everyone knows I don't do numbers, but it's funny. Someone said today, actually yesterday at the ASTA meeting, I looked and I understand it. I mean, I worked for you guys for a while. But, but he just picked up the sheet and he said, this just tells such a great story. And that's what you see.
Absolutely. You have no external debt. You funded all of your capital either by partnering and getting other grants or using your reserves and saving. You've been very fiscally responsible, set aside money. So yeah, no, you're in a good position.
Awesome. So we good?
Dumb question. So the water utility statements are on the back. The water utility statements are on the back of the package. And in the entities that you identified that are consolidated in, the water utility's not listed there?
No. No. Because it's in the town's operations. So it's part of the town proper.
Right.
And then all those other ones are brought in after the fact. Yep.
Thank you.
And there was a, there was a paragraph in here that explained that, right? Yeah.
Yep. In note one, where we talk about the reporting entity, it describes how the consolidation is done. So first of all, all of the town's operations all get added together and then they bring in the share of the other entities.
If you could please take note that I'm showing the CIO something that he's not showing me.
Okay.
Oh, it doesn't? I take it back.
Okay. Sorry, it doesn't say that?
Doesn't say what he was saying.
Okay.
Okay, any more questions? So, so this evening, are we in order of a motion to accept these if everyone's okay with them? Gloria, that's what you're after and then?
Yep. Normally your audit committee chair would bring forward the motion. Yep.
Okay.
I'll bring forward the motion. The audit committee saw this in much more depth, actually, just a few days ago and it was very good and always because, yeah, for some of us, these numbers are pretty difficult, but you explain them very clearly and it's truly appreciated. But I'd like to make that motion.
Okay. Seconded. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Gloria. It was great. So do we have a copy to sign because I don't, I marked on that. Excellent. All righty. Okay, I didn't do the minutes. So approval of minutes, Town Council, October 10th, please. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Town Council meeting November 14th. Moved. Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And Committee of the Whole, November 21st, please. Moved. Seconded. Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, so business arising. The Happy Community Project and the recommended motion there is that council refer the $8,000 request for the Good Neighbor Project to budget. Go ahead, Counselor Cleveland.
I'll make that motion. I'd like to speak just briefly to it.
Yep, we need a seconder to get her okay. We're seconded.
Thank you. The Happy Community Project, it was presented to Committee of the Whole, I think it was back in August and we voted to kind of defer the entire thing until the new council came in place. I think this is a really important project as we grow and our faces change and, in terms of as we expand our recreation and cultural offerings, that this can be kind of a key to that. And so what this does, the referral to budget, the $8,000 is basically our part, which is 25% of a larger budget of $51,000. And the idea is, and I've, the, all of the proposal is attached, the idea is that if they can't get the grants in place, then we don't pay the $8,000. So the whole thing has to happen in order us to pay it. And again, I think it's a really important project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, my, my thoughts on this one was, I'm glad it came out now because getting the Danny Graham piece, together with the work we just did yesterday and getting the cultural parks and heritage and rec done and then with Gord McIntosh coming in, so it's almost like everything's going to come together. We're going to have a package that we can, we can sit down and merely hash out and say, because they're all important, but we can't do one without the other because they overlap so much, right? So it's, it's good that they're all on the table. So pretty excited about these. Anyone else? Everybody good with this one? Go ahead, Counselor Bow.
Thank you, Your Worship. I was just reviewing the, the package this week. It's been, it's been a while since we entertained the proposal and I didn't see anything in the package materials this week about the community's financial contribution. And it's my understanding, if I remember correctly, and I'm just hoping that someone can refresh my memory, this is, this is an app-based program, right? And there will be a cost per month to the community for, in being involved in the program? Am I right?
No. No, there, there is an app, but that's not part of, of this basic program. This program is different than that. What this is, is the creation of a whole bunch of different, like there's, there's training that's involved and those kinds of things and it involves festivals and kind of getting to know your neighbors and that kind of thing. There is an app as part of this, but I don't believe that's part of, there is a monthly charge as part of that, at least at this stage.
That was not my understanding, but I will take your word for it. So, yeah, so that was my only question. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Good? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. 10B, development agreement for Myrtle Street residential project. So the recommended motion there is that council pass second reading to the proposed development agreement to allow for a comprehensively planned residential neighborhood. Have a motion, please, here on the floor. Okay, moved. I have a seconder. Send seconded. Go ahead, Deputy.
I remember the last time that we kind of reviewed this. We were, I guess, left out in the dark about what exactly was going to go, what kind of housing? Was it duplexes? Was it this? Was it that? And I don't believe that we received any more information to solidify that since. To me, what I've read is pretty much the same. That was what we tabled. I'm not sure what has happened that would change my mind at the time, but I know the residents there quite well. Behind the school, we had some discussion about how wide Myrtle Street was, about possible, maybe it would be a dirt road there, maybe it wouldn't. Would there be sidewalks? Would there, I just, for me to be able to support this, I think I, I just need more solid answers that I don't believe one of the developers here really had. And I always think of, if this was built in my backyard or my neighborhood, what would I think? And, you know, we are at a time where we need housing. A thousand percent always happy to see this come forward and very happy to, you know, that someone sees the value in, in investing in our community. But I also think, you know, we, we need ducks in a row there and maybe I'm wrong, but if no solid answers have come since then, I can't see that there's information that I would be ready to support.
Okay. Counselor Lasser?
Maybe the CIO can help with this, but I was told after, by somebody in the public that maybe I wasn't sure what I voted on the first time. And I guess, I guess the question that I have that I'm trying to get my head around, and I know Counselor Bell Hatfield talked about it, is to move this project to the next phase so they can actually come up with a comprehensive plan. I guess I'm not sure what, because we're not voting on the, we're not voting approval to go ahead with the project. We're, we're giving approval for them to submit plans to the next phase. Is that? I guess I'm, I thought I knew what I was voting on last time and I'm not 100% sure.
That's it. But I mean, the CIO or even, you know, the planners here, but that was, that's what we, we discussed and it was kind of, it was difficult to wrap our heads around, but it's, it's step one of, it's step one of what I want to say would be 1,000 more steps. This is just saying, you know, we're okay with development happening there, but understanding that, that there are so many processes and rules and regulations and bylaws and everything in place and everything has, all the Ts have to be crossed and the Is have to be dotted to do that. So, yeah, we were just voting on saying, you know what? We know that staff is going to take care of this and everything we've set up is going to be taken into consideration.
So what, so what would, is there a project that could happen on this land that wouldn't have to go through the process? Like it, for example, if they chose to build an apartment building and not subdivide, that would, I'm assuming that would just go ahead without having to go through a public hearing? Or, I guess I'm trying to figure out why, why it's come to us. And I guess if the, I guess is the question, and I know it sounds, it sounds terrible to say this, I guess I'm not sure that, what the question is we're answering because I understood that the project, we weren't approving the project to be finalized because we didn't have any details, but it was moving up to the next, the next step of the plan so that we could, like, it would come back to us a number of times and then there's, you know, staff oversight and that kind of thing. I mean, the presentation left a lot of questions, I think, for all of us around what it's going to be, but I guess what I was told afterwards is, and maybe it's wrong, that's not really what we were voting on that night. And I guess that's what I, I want to get my head around if I could.
Go ahead, Jeff, answer that.
All right. So, so we have a municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw. Land use bylaw sets out, you know, zoning and the rules for development on any property within the town. This property is rather large. It's 10 acres. To answer your question, what could be done there as of right? They could do a single-family dwelling. They could do a duplex. Could they do anything up to eight units or is that? No, two units. So they could put a duplex on, on 10 acres. That doesn't seem like an effective use of the asset. So normally in this situation in the past, we would refer people to our subdivision bylaw. Now I ask you to just consider for a moment, when was the last time you saw a 40-unit subdivision developed in our town? Right? When was the last time you saw a 10-unit subdivision developed in our town? Our subdivision bylaw is a bit dated and a bit restrictive. It puts a lot of barriers upfront for the developer, a lot of cash out for all of the infrastructure built to the municipal specification and turned over to us. This developer has a different idea that might be instructive to us as we review our subdivision bylaw. What he has said is, look, I believe this parcel is large enough for 40 single, single unit standalone, wherever you want to come, detached homes. And his, his business model is that they would be rentals. And so what he's saying is, I would like to build 40 units on this 10-acre property in this area, but I want to do it in a way that, that makes sense for me. And so that's not building all the street infrastructure and turning it over. He wants to keep it all as a single lot and build 40 units, not at one, not all at once, but on a, on a thicker schedule. And we're saying, that's fine. But if you look in the development agreement, there are a number of studies, reports that are required by professional engineers. Site grading plan, development and site servicing plan, stormwater management plan, transportation impact study, sanitary servicing, erosion, sediment control and so on. These will be produced by the developers' consultants, submitted to our engineering department, planning department for review, and only when they're acceptable do they get approved. Now, the alternate process, the subdivision process is all this stuff gets done upfront at the cost of the developer. What the developer is saying is, give me permission to build 40 single detached units on this lot. Let me know that that's a possibility and I'll do this work to, to, to make it a reality, but I'm not going to do all that work upfront and hope that council agrees with it at the end. Now, if you're in a, a community that sees these sorts of subdivisions occurring, you know, at, at all your borders, you know, you're sprawling, there's not much risk there because the council in a city like that would have a reputation for approving these sorts of things. We don't have that reputation because we haven't done that for a very long time. This developer has a different approach and I think, as I said, it, it might be helpful for us to learn from in terms of a revision of our subdivision bylaw. I don't think there's anything to be afraid of here. It's a bit unusual because we'd like to see, you know, the, the plan completely laid out with all the infrastructure there and then everybody has full knowledge. But what you have full knowledge of here is you're talking 40 units on a lot, there are some buffering and there are all these studies that will have to be done by qualified consultants, submitted and approved by the town before the work can, can proceed. There's something else that's mentioned in here, and I know it's a concern, is the capacity of Myrtle Street. That's been identified. It is, it is not, you know, a big wide street, but right now it, it leads to a hayfield. As this project rolls out, if additional infrastructure or widening or improvements are required for Myrtle Street, then that will come forward as any street improvements do to your capital budget. So that is something that staff will, will keep an eye on and, and advise you. And of course, you hear from residents, right? You'll hear from residents when, when there's an increase in traffic, when there are kids, you know, walking to a bus stop or garbage trucks going up that road, maybe more frequently. I don't know. Anyway, I, I don't think that there's a need to be fearful about the infrastructure because, again, that will all be properly designed. In, in our world, when it's done, it would be done to exactly the specification that, and the design, the layout, that would allow them in the future to subdivide if they want to and sell the properties off individually. They're not obligated to do that, but if, if it were my business, I'd be thinking far enough out to say, okay, how am I exiting this business? And it might be that you can't sell 40 standalone houses to one buyer, but you might be able to sell 40 to five buyers or, or 40 buyers. And that's where the ability to subdivide would come in handy. So that's, that's a, I guess, a long answer to maybe a short question, but.
No, it was, it was a good answer. I got some, I jotted down some notes actually because I, I read it three times just to make sure. Go ahead, Counselor Cleveland.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. It's, it's a good explanation and it does make sense as far as it goes. The thing I think that a lot of people are worried about, and I can, I can only speak for myself, but I'm, I do hear these whispers all over the place. Once we, if we approve this development agreement and it goes off to staff and staff does all of this work and I have, look, I have the greatest respect for our staff and their abilities. Does it ever come back to us? That's the part, I think there's, there's a fear there that there may be decisions made that we might not be all that happy with, that we're never going to see until it's too late. So there's that control factor, a safety net. I believe Kelly actually mentioned that, that word, but is, is there that?
So, so not necessarily. But when they present, and there's, there's a concept within the, within the package that shows a P Street. You know, when, when they propose a street layout, our, our emergency services are going to review that and ensure that turning radiuses are sufficient and that width is sufficient for the apparatus and, and for municipal servicing and so on. When the water lines are laid out, it's going to be, it's, it's going to be reviewed by your engineers to, to ensure they're adequate size and going to be able to serve and provide adequate pressure and, and hydrants installed to be able to provide fire protection and so on. So these are not areas that council is necessarily going to be concerned with. You're going to be concerned with, with other matters that might have to do with, with neighbors and, and disruption. There will be some, as there, as there is with any construction, right? When there's a house being built next to you, it causes a certain amount of, of inconvenience for that period of time. What I'll say to you is, is this, if this is any assurance, is as this builds out, and I don't know the timeline off the top of my head, but as this builds out, if staff become aware of anything that we're, we're sort of butting heads on or that, that council is likely to be concerned about, we'll make sure you're aware of that. Right? We'll make sure, because frankly, we're going to want your backing, right? If we have to take a firm position on, on some aspect of this that they would prefer to do differently, but our professionals are saying that it's not to the standard that we want, we're not, you know, our staff are not going to hang themselves out there, you know, without the support of council. And I'm going to look at Martin and say, am I, am I right, Martin, in that there are no further, like, building permits are not, don't come back to council? These studies wouldn't come back to council? They would go to, to the staff to review and to approve? There's no other council approval unless there was an amendment to the agreement? Is that?
Correct. And in terms of public process, it's the second, the last stage of the public process, that the last one would be in the field period should, depending on council decision. But Yarmouth, he had said. But Meryn, he had said, it's right now.
Thank you.
Counselor Fayers?
Thank you. It wasn't so long ago at this table that we were talking about the restrictions that were placed on developers in regard to subdivisions, creating subdivisions, and we were looking for unique ways for us to get past that because, well, right now, there's a street in the North End, uh, Pleasant Street, that connects Breeze Drive, I believe it is. That street's been developed to the point of, all the infrastructure's in place, but it's not moving ahead because, quite honestly, there's a lot of money tied up in it already by the developer. And so we were looking for unique situations, unique solutions a couple of years ago, and I see this as possibly a unique solution that, that provides that, that very thing we were looking for two years ago. So I wasn't really unnerved about the, the process at all. I, I thought that there are a lot, enough checks and balances in place that, you know, nothing's going to happen without, without approvals, and so I'm not the least bit concerned, and I'd be more, more than happy to support it tonight.
Counselor Lesser?
And, and maybe this isn't, I know this isn't what we're voting on tonight, but I am curious, is there an opportunity somewhere, whether it's at the end of Jody Shelley Drive or the piece of land that, I'm just looking at the map here, that, that runs by lot eight and nine? There's a piece of land in there as well. Is there an opportunity for another entrance and exit? Because I think that's, to me, that's the biggest, and I know there's some reassurances around making sure that that road is going to be wide enough, but, but I see what that road's used for, and it's, and maybe it's, you know, I know it's, it's not meant for church parking, but on a Sunday, it's packed. So I am, and I know, you know, on Chestnut Street, they started parking too much, you know, too close to the corners, and that was, you know, those can be moved, but I just, I'm just wondering, is there any option? And I, I know this doesn't impact tonight's decision, I don't think, but is there, is there any possibility of somehow putting in another entrance or exit that, that has been explored at all? I don't know who's...
Belle, you just yell out if you have a question, because I can't see anymore.
Yeah, I actually have my hand raised, and I would like to comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, your worship. So, I...
Is it, is it separate from what Derek asked?
Oh, yeah, it's, yeah.
Okay. Then let's just hang on a second.
But I would, yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah. We'll let our planner answer Derek's, and then, or, sorry, Counselor Lesser, and then...
Thank you for the question. I, I wanted to pull this up just to give you a context, and, and everybody else. I never like to say no. You know, we, we certainly thought about it, we understand that is the main concern. But given the, sort of the context, given the, given the, the existing footprint and the shape, there's really no utter simple way to, to accommodate what you had just asked about, Counselor. The, the only potential one, which would likely be very problematic, is that little, because this is part of the subject property, and, and what this really is, historically, it accommodates the drainage. As I sort of spoke about, you know, the, the entire lot is a bit of a bowl and naturally flows towards that connection to our storm infrastructure under Parade Street, and, and that little sliver of land is a big part of that existing drainage system, and so paving over that, everything's possible, it's just a matter of cost, right? And at some point, there has to be a sort of line drawn, what makes sense and what doesn't, what's feasible financially and physically. There's also a big difference in grade between that little end and Parade Street, so, so there's also likely engineering challenge with, with connecting it. But I'm not going to say it's not possible, I'm just going to say it would be very, very challenging to do so. Hence my answer, I would, I would counsel you by saying no. You know, trust that Myrtle can be upgraded and designed in a way that can definitely handle the 30-odd trips in AM Peak and the 40-odd, you know, low 50s trips in the PM Peak. And I would sort of leave it at that, unless there are any other questions, Counselor.
No, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Sorry. Could I just add to that? Because it was, it was raised in the, in the public hearing, question was raised, why we weren't using Trask Avenue? And the answer is that Trask Avenue is not a street. Trask Avenue, there's a sign by a senior's home, it is actually a driveway to a parking lot, it's not town-owned. I don't know the history on why there's a sign there that says Trask Avenue, but it probably has something to do with how the property was acquired by the province back in the day.
Thank you.
Good. Counselor Hatfield?
Oh, thank you, your worship. So I can certainly appreciate the concerns that have been expressed by residents. In June, before the first public meeting that was held, before it even came to the planning committee, I was skeptical too. I, I was trying to wrap my head around what that would look like. But having walked with the developer and our planning officials through this process over now, I think, three, at least three public meetings, a, a, a public presentation, then the planning committee process, then the town council process and public hearing, I have become convinced that this is something I can support. Because first of all, I trust the professionalism of our staff, and that includes the, the development agreement itself that has been written. I've read the agreement a number of times. I, I can't think of anything it doesn't address. And so for me, this is perhaps unique to Yarmouth, a, a new idea for Yarmouth. But I see this project as sort of a deconstructed apartment building. So instead of apartment, an apartment building of 40 units that's built up from the ground, it's 40 units that are separated and look like houses, but it really is an apartment complex. In other parts of the world, it's not unusual for people to leasehold and not own property. They, they, they have long-term security, but they don't own the actual physical property that, that their residence is on. So, so what it does do though, is it provides assurances for the developer who is proposing to invest in a, a large amount of money in, in, in his own infrastructure development. It takes, it, it provides him with some security that politics is not going to play a role down the road when he has already put in a lot of money. And I can understand in today's climate why he would be looking for that. I, I'd like to speak to the, the, the actual idea behind the development and the topography of the development. This is really an exciting opportunity, I think, to look at how we can green development so that instead of hardscaping with concrete and pavement, we provide onsite capacity to manage our stormwater runoff. We are living in times where climate is accelerating rainfall events, and we, we've come to recognize that hardscaping, concrete pavement, those things are contributing to the flooding, the overland flooding that is affecting so many communities. And so when I look at a, a streetscape that may not be paved, there are many, many treatments that you can use on a street that is not, does not include concrete or pavement, that provides security and stability, but still allows for water to, to penetrate. So I, I, I'm, I've, I'm become quite enamored with the possibilities that are available on this piece of land, and, and I'm excited about the developers' interest in pursuing a different way of developing a large piece of land. And so I, I am comfortable with the professionalism of our staff, and I am comfortable with supporting this motion for those, for those reasons.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So, as I spoke to before, we, we kind of had a, an opinion, I think, that we weren't all happy with the amount of information that was presented at the time. And I, for me, once again, I don't know if that's changed. So if, if, I, I really appreciate the conversation and everything that's going on here, but at the end of the day, if you were a developer that was going to, that had a plan, I've been at two of, out of the three sessions, and when it was asked, what type of housing, what it would be, more exact answers, it was like, I'm not sure. I can't vote yes, I'm not sure, personally. I trust our staff 100%. It has nothing to do with that, it just has to do with, like, a polished plan. And I don't believe this is, I believe this is more open, and as we said, if we vote yes tonight, it never comes back. So unless there's, I guess, an appeal or something, but on the side of, of the whole public input, they were here, they asked the questions, they didn't get answers at the time, I didn't feel we got answers at the time, and I feel like this is the same information that we had on September 3rd. And I guess in context, to me, not too long ago, we were knocking on doors, promising people that if they voted for us, we were going to stand up for what they believe, and the people that I talked to that live in that area don't believe that this is a polished plan. This has nothing to do with staff or running down anyone who wants to invest, I just, I believe there's a little saying about carts and horses, and it may apply here.
Anyone else? I'm, I'm just gonna, I'll share where I'm coming from. So I appreciate that. I, I think with, with Counselor Lesser's question, like, what were we voting on, it's two different things. We're, I don't think we're at the full plan yet. We're just, we're not at the plan yet, which is scary, but we're not at the plan yet. We're just saying, I, I guess if I had to say it in plain English, in, in my view, I would say, do we want 40 new housing units? And, and I think the answer would be generally yes, take out where it is and all those pieces. So, so it can't be a plan yet, because I think somebody at the table said it, either you or the C A O, they're not going to put all that money into it until they know we're okay with 40 units, that the, you know, the way that they want to roll them out, and then the plan comes. So I'm okay with it. I mean, I just jotted down some thoughts, that's the third time I read it, because I just learn more every time I read it. But, but it's, it is a development agreement, and it's difficult to wrap your heads around it if you're not a planning expert. You are, I, you know where I sit on planning. I'm, I'm always asking the question. But if it goes through tonight, it's, it's not a golden ticket by any stretch of the imagination to do whatever you want on that property. It simply gives the developer the go-ahead, and it's saying, you know what, we support development. But we support development with all the rules and regulations and, and every piece that actually council has set up in the first place to say, this is what we want this town to look like and how we want it to be. So giving it back to staff, for me, and, and everyone's different, and I respect that, giving it back to staff is okay for me because I, I, I trust them implicitly, they know, it's, it's not about what staff wants, it's, it's about the town's vision and, and ensuring that you're not going to do something that's going, I don't want to say make us look bad, but embarrass us, or do something that, that we're not wanting. So it's, it's the rules, the regulations, statutes, that's not just ours, they're federal and provincial, right? So it's everything we have to follow to, to get to that next step. Jeff alluded to all the plans, so when I read through that, I just kind of, phew, like, everything from, I guess I jotted it down, a couple of the stormwater management plan, erosion and sediment control, the environmental site assessment, all those things haven't come because we haven't said, man, we're really cool with 40 new units, like, show us what it'll look like. You know, we've, we've always said, the, you know, staff brings the facts and we bring the values. And, and we're speaking a lot about that here tonight, and, and values in community are tremendously important to all of us at this table. It's, it's important for us to do what's right, what's right for the entire community. And that's, that's a hard one, because when, when we have pockets of, of folks that, that may not be in agreement, it's difficult to say, you know, what's the, what's the greater community thinking? So we have to consider that. The, the other piece is, is that the reality is that this town, correct me if I'm wrong, their C A O, but we're like a mile by two miles, or something like that. We're, we're small. We're, we're a small town, it's not a lot of space to grow, and we are growing. Our population hadn't gone up since 1994, and we're up 5% in the last few years. Like, that's, that's huge in a small town. So we're growing. But we have to use what we have in the best manner possible, so planning 101. The, the, the world is changing, that means that we have to change with it, and I, I guess when I was thinking, you know, what that means for me, I, I guess I look at that property and I think, man, I, I need to understand that a large field that's been basically unused, a couple of blocks from Stars Road, a couple of blocks away from, from downtown, next to a high school, it's impossible in anyone's imagination for that to remain undeveloped in, in a town that's wanting to grow. It's just not going to happen, it can't. So it, it's going to be developed one way or another, regardless of, of what development takes place, we have to listen to concerns and address them. So I, I think we've been doing that, and there's more room for that to happen. So, so the Myrtle Street piece, I, I think that was alluded to in one of the documents I read, and we've talked about it tonight. If we need to widen it, if we need to do something, let's see how it goes. They're not building 40 spots, 40 places in one sitting, they're, they're going to take their time, it's going to take years, we'll see how it goes, and we will react to that. And it'll be out of respect, and it'll be out of need. So, so those things. I guess my, my thought here is, is, is the wider community, understanding that, again, we, we care about every single resident here, how they feel, where they live, everything. But we heard loud and clear, there's not one person at this table that hasn't heard loud and clear, we need housing, and we need all types of housing. So we've had questions, is it going to be low income? I don't think, just to give my opinion, we're not going to land 40 low housing spots on one lot. We're, we're not going to do that. That would be creating something that was done 50 years ago. I think my grandfather did it, so I'm not going to blame him, right? But we needed housing, and we didn't, when we know better, we do better. But, but you know, that, that mixture. We've got some developments on the go, and in, in my opinion, hopefully this will be another one, as long as we can, you know, we're addressing those concerns. But I can say that turning down 40 new homes, again, would, would be a slap in the face to everybody trying to find a place to live, or that, that simply doesn't have a place to live, because they don't have to live there. Those spaces can be taken up by somebody else that's moving, and then you move into what they're in. Like, it's, it's just moving things around. I think it would go against, I know it would go against everything we're trying to do for the community as a whole. We need housing, and it's sitting here in our lap with a developer ready to put the money in. I remember, I, I know I'm saying a lot, but I could get it all up. When I ran 12 years ago, I, I remember the brochure, and it said, opening our doors, because we were so closed to development, that you could go to the city, you could go to Kate Breton, and it was like, Yarmouth's closed, don't anybody come in here. And I can't, there's no blame, it's, I, I don't know what happened, but we've changed that, and we've consistently taken step after step after step, and we've changed it. And we just, man, I just, I just don't want to go, I, I don't want to go backwards, I just want to get, I want to get it right. Across... Across the globe in developed countries, in, in developed countries especially, we find something that usually remains as an elephant in the room, and, and sometimes we don't wanna talk about it, because we don't wanna sound like it's disrespectful, so I'm, I'm gonna say it, and it's not, I think somebody said it tonight, it, it's, it's the nimbyism. And it's, and I say that with the utmost respect, because there's not one person that wouldn't say first thing, oh my gosh, that's close to me, whatever it is. I remember Charles Crosby Drive, and the former mayor did not put a street in to be named after him, 'cause he thought it was a cool thing to do. He put that street in, because we were so messed up on Stars Road that something had to be done, and that was the perfect spot for it, and, and it's done the job, but it was scary, and folks were upset. I, I think there was, there was nimbyism in, for the one that's being dug on Shaw Avenue, right? Like, everything, everything and anything we try to do with regard to development, the beauty, and I mean it, the beauty of democracy is that people get to share the good, bad, and the ugly of what they think, and then we have to take it into consideration. But it, it is, the, the nimby is the protection of our properties, and that's, that's human nature, we all do it. It's, I don't know, it's a, it's a hard thing, you know, it, it's a hard thing, but there's lots of rules. Anyway, having said all that, I could probably talk for another hour, 'cause I just, but I won't. I, I'm 100% in, in favor of going forward, understanding that this is just the first step, and, tell me if this is true, it, it's not like, it's, it's not like all these next steps going forward are gonna be locked away from council, you know, like, we can, we're gonna know what's going on.
Yeah, I can imagine, you know, should council wanna update on, on certain
Yeah.
Timeframes?
Yeah.
I'm sure that can be provided in different means, whether it's presentation or memo for your information, I'm sure we can, we can do that.
And I think that would be important, because this is really important to us, we just wanna know, like, what's, what's, what's going on, but, but not ours to, to micromanage. And I'm, I'm here and the deputies, it's not coming back to us, and that's, like, you lose your breath over it, right? 'Cause we, we wanna make sure that we get it right, but it's that, we, we're trusting staff, so I guess I'm, I'm thankful to the developers who can see the need and understand, you know, what our expectations are, and thankful for putting it on the doorstep, so, do we need 40 new units? Yes. Can we work through everything going forward? I, I think we can, and that's, that's just my opinion.
Thank you.
You know, earlier the deputy mayor made a comment about cart before the horse, and I certainly respect that concern. But I'd see, the way I see it is that our endorsement tonight would merely provide the developers some confidence to take the next step, and that, I mean, why would they bother to invest more time and resources in a project without at least this minimal level of support? And so I see that as, as opening the door for them to proceed further, I see it as no more than that. And so that's why I'll be supporting it.
Deputy?
So, when I speak, I don't speak to convince people, I just like to talk about how it is I arrived at the opinion that I did, so by no means am I trying to diminish the opinions around the table to support what it is, I think, but the comment was just made, that 40, we're not gonna put 40 low-income apartments there, we're just not gonna do that.
'Cause, yeah, 'cause we don't.
We, we don't have a say. When we pass this
Yeah, we do.
It's out of our hands.
No. So tell me I'm wrong on that, because I thought we, we always agreed that we are not, we're gonna always do mixed.
But it doesn't come back to us.
So nobody
We're gonna say that.
Sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, nobody does subsidized rentals without somebody providing the subsidy, right? No private developer is gonna put in rental units at below-market rents unless they have funding from the province, or province and federal government sometimes, that doesn't exist in this case. I'm looking at Martin, and he's
No, it's, from what we understand, through chair, we, we anticipate, you know, 40 units at market, there was no indication of, of them being affordable, or, or being provided with the benefit of one of the programs that C A O just mentioned.
Yeah, so the only, so if the, the province and the federal government, when they were into that business, you know, decades ago, they would put clusters of these, and, and they backed away from that, and more recently, they've done a percentage of the units in a, in a development or in a building. The other program that they have that, that is, I think, more favored is to give a rent subsidy to an individual, and so they go and they rent a market rent apartment building, or apartment, wherever they can find it, and the government provides part of the rent. But that is an individual basis, and it would be, it'd be pretty incredible if, if all were taken up by people who had government-provided rent subsidies, but it, you know, I suppose it could happen.
Thank you.
Does it, did that help?
Yeah, I just wanted to make that point.
Yeah, so, can I ask, I'm just gonna ask this question first, because I was literally under the impression that we had, we had agreed, not on this, but in one of our documents, that what we want is mixed, that we don't want somebody to come in and put all
Your worship, perhaps, what are you referring to as a, is, there could be something in the N P S, and my apologies if I'm not able to
That's okay.
To quote that at this very moment, what you're referring to is a general planning practice, it's a, it's a good, sound, you know, planning where you don't concentrate certain uses, users for, for reasons, you know, you kind of spread the wells around and, and ensure that, that, that sort of, you know, what, what you mentioned is avoided. In some situations, you simply can't, it's very difficult, 'cause we do not control tenure, you do control use, and in terms of uses, you know, you're about to, you're, you're, you're considering making a decision on a, on a D A that allows for, I think there's eight, uses, single, semi, duplex, row homes, and multi-residential development with up to 80 units, and that would be in addition to the typical R1 uses. There is no such use as a trailer or many home that would be allowed, or that's listed, that would require amendment, which would have to come back before this, before this group, before council, if that helps at all.
Yeah, it, it does, 'cause it's all, it's all in there, it's just a matter of finding all this, so when he asks that question, it's like the light bulb goes on, 'cause it's an important, it's an important question. So, Counselor Lester?
I know, I sound very wishy-washy, because I was the one that initially shot this down. And I can tell you that it wasn't the developer, or anybody at this table, that brought it to my attention, that maybe, that maybe what I thought I was voting on was the wrong thing. And does it scare me to move forward with this? 100%. But at the same time, I know we need, we need apartments, I'm just, and I know, you know, this might not come back to us, I'm just hoping there can be something done as far as the traffic flow, 'cause that's, to me, that's the biggest concern. It's, I'm, I'm hoping the process, I gotta trust the process, I guess, which is hard, I'm gonna lose sleep over it, that the process, and not, this has nothing to do with you, but that the process is going to make sure that the concerns are addressed, that, that we've heard about, and that I think most of us share. And I know it seems bizarre that, like, a month after, or two months after, I initially was the first one to say, I, I wasn't in favor of this, and then hearing nothing more makes, you know, sounds quite wishy-washy, except that, except that I wasn't 100%, and I'm willing to admit that, aware of what I was actually voting on the first time. And moving to the next phase, I just, I wanna make sure the next phase is done right, and I know we might not have a huge say in that, but I'm hoping the safeguards that are in place through our planning strategies are, are going to prevent things happening that we don't want to happen. Anyway, that's, that's me being open and honest, I guess.
I'm, I'm just gonna make a quick comment on that. The last thing that is, is wishy-washy, that's, that's the last thing, in, in my opinion, it's, we sit at this table, and we learn, and that, that, that's clear, regardless of how we vote, I think we've all learned a lot tonight, right? And it's, it's, it's a big deal, and I've, I think I've come in here more times than anyone and said yes, and then the next time it's no, because you, you're just learning. So to me, that's a, that's a big deal, that's what we've all agreed we're here for, let's, let's learn and, and come up with, I was gonna turn your light on.
Yep.
It's already on.
I'm already on, yep. Martin, could I ask you to bring up the, the diagram of the, I'll call it subdivision?
I apologize, Counselor Hatfield, I'm gonna take you down again.
She can't see what you're
This one or the other one?
That's the one, that's the one.
That's the one?
Okay, so that's Schedule 3 in the, in the package, if, if Bell can't, or Counselor Hatfield can't see what we're looking at. So, I, I just want the planner, I'll put the planner a little bit on the spot by, by saying this, I think I'm correct. If this were a subdivision application, if the property owner said, you know what, I wanna do this the traditional way, I wanna subdivide, I wanna put in 42 units, they would create a plan that looks much like what you have in front of you there, they would pay a survey or tens of thousands of dollars to create the survey plan, they would do the studies that are all listed in the development agreement, and they would bring that to council and ask for your approval to do that subdivision. You don't know what the buildings look like, you don't know if they're 1,000 square feet or 3,000 square feet, you don't know if they're single or if they're duplex, right? That's the reality of subdivision. Think about Breeze Drive, when that was subdivided, right, when that subdivision was approved, nobody knew that the houses would look exactly the way they looked, they're custom-built, stick-built homes. This developer has a lot of work to do to get to the point that they are actually putting buildings on, on the property, and they may not have a clear idea if they're singles or if they're doubles, if they're 1,000 square feet or 3,000 square feet, they may not, may not know that yet. But what they do know is they wanna do approximately 40 units on this 10-acre lot, and they will do it according to the standards that are out on in the development agreement, or they won't do it. And so we, we, it isn't like, you know, another development agreement that council dealt with in the last term was for 236 Water Street, where we got to see a picture, right, we got to see a picture of exactly what that looked like. That was a development agreement for a, a single building with many units in it. This is different, because it's, it's a different way of coming at what essentially is a subdivision. You know, it, it, if this were a subdivision application, the, the residents in the area and, and the counselors around this table would have some of the very same concerns, right? But you'd be looking at it maybe slightly differently, in the sense that it's a subdivision, as opposed to a single mass development, which we're not as familiar with. All we can tell you from a staff perspective is, is, you know, it, it's recommended, and we think the right safeguards are in place, but we know that there are concerns in the community, we know there are concerns at this table, we've recently put in a, a process whereby you receive a memo from the development office when things are occurring, that you might get questions about, the same at least will go for this project, that as this moves along the process, as we know they're gonna be breaking ground on, on 1, 2, 3, or 10 buildings, you'll know that ahead of time. And so you'll anticipate, right, what are the impacts of that? You can ask the questions, you know, what will that mean in terms of, of trucks and vehicles moving on, on Myrtle Street? And this council, and the previous council, were very tuned into the community in terms of pedestrian issues, traffic issues, regularly brought to the, to the council table, requests for reports from staff, and I think that you, you did a good job working with staff to, to fix some, some issues in the community. I think this is no different. If, if you hear, your ears to the ground, and you hear issues on Myrtle Street about the need for, for safer pedestrian infrastructure, it's gonna come to committee of the whole, and you're gonna ask for a staff report, and it'll get put on the capital list. I, I have confidence in the process that we have. I know this is not easy, because it is different, and I know there are concerns in the community, so I don't, I don't envy you your deliberations, but, yeah, that's, I just wanted to point that out, that a subdivision application would look very much the same, in a lot of respects.
Thank you. Anyone else? So we're gonna vote. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary?
Nay.
Motion carried. New business, committee appointments, and this is that council appoint Gilders to the Yarmouth Area Industrial Commission, and Kelly Bichera-Le Quat to the Recreation Committee. Okay, so moved and seconded? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, do we want to move 11B? Do you wanna move that to the water?
Chair.
No, but, did Jerry just leave? Have we, this is a sidebar, have we gotten Counselor Cleveland his signature and everything for, for checks? No? Okay.
Being one.
But that doesn't matter, he's still chair.
Yeah.
Okay, so what do you, what do you think?
Are you talking to me, or?
I'm talking, I'm looking at him for like eight years, for however many years, for water utilities, so I'm gonna look at you.
Okay, it doesn't matter to me, one way or the other, we could, we could do it the other way, if that's the problem.
I think that's where it goes.
It'd be better if it started with the U. It's absolutely.
Right, can we just, can we just agree, do we need a motion to move it?
No, we'll just have a special utility meeting after council.
Oh, okay, oh.
Good.
All right, letters of congrat
Your worship, your worship, before you move forward from that, can I point out that in the second paragraph of the memorandum, memorandum, there's a word spelled wrong, and if it's gonna go forward, it should probably be changed, it's not medicate, it's mediate. Thank you.
Right?
I was, I thought it was meditate, I was thinking about some yoga, okay, thank you.
That council send letters of congratulations to the recently elected in the provincial election, and I, I did wanna add, and our former M L A. Okay, moved, seconded, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Request to present, that council have attempted to set, and Neil McKenzie present, present about tourism and light pollution at a future meeting. Moved and seconded. So, do we know what the, the ask is? We, we already do the light pollution, we already do the
You want the specific answer to the ask?
Yes, please, I do.
They'd be asking for the town to develop an action plan to address the increase in light pollution, so they know we already have a policy, but it's kind of, they're gonna be asking for council to take more steps to address it.
So is it the difference between a policy and a bylaw, maybe? Is that what they're after, do you think?
We'd have to hear the presentation.
I didn't, I didn't know if you read that one.
Like that.
Okay.
It's an action plan, so.
Okay, action plan. All righty. Anybody? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. All right, reports, council advisory report, deputy mayor?
A recommended motion that council refer the installation of Huntington Street sidewalk to budget.
Now I have a question. Do we, did we get some kind of a traffic study on that, or it just goes to budget? Do we get a report that says, that we don't believe it's needed?
The Huntington Street sidewalk issue is that we have a sidewalk that comes down part of the street on one side
Yeah.
And part of the street on the other side, similar to what we had on the upper part of Parade Street, or have on the upper part of Parade Street.
Exactly.
And, and a gap in the middle, and a gap in the middle, so the request was to complete the sidewalk, so we haven't studied that, but it just seems to make a little
We really need to study.
No, we don't, but I just didn't know if the traffic authority looks at it, or if they had, I just couldn't remember. Perfect, good, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council direct staff to install an accessible parking space at center town square next fiscal year.
Seconded, any discussion? Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council amend the expense reimbursement policy to change the per kilometer rate from 55 cents to 58 cents.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Might want to change that to facts rate too. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
A recommended motion that council re-adopt the hospitality policy as presented.
Okay. Moved and seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
A recommended motion that council adopt the code of conduct for elected official policy as presented.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council direct staff to prepare a request for proposal for an investigator.
Moved and seconded. Are we looking to do this ourselves, or share, or what are you thinking? Or you don't know?
So there's a couple of things there. My understanding is that AMA was, had done an RFQ process to identify qualified investigators throughout the province. And what I'm not sure of is, and I don't have and it won't be available till the new year, is whether or not there's anyone on that list who is within our region. And so once we have the results of that, we might recommend that we select somebody from that list. So the motion that you have, I just want to take a quick peek here. Prepare a request for proposal. So if it's all right with council to approve that motion, but if we find that we have results from a sufficient procurement process, if you're open to us bringing that back as a recommendation rather than issuing our own, then putting this on the books allows us to get going in the new year in case there isn't. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council direct staff to look into possibilities around senior safety services in the town of Yarmouth.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All those in favor?
Your worship.
Sorry, got to wait. I keep looking at you, but I...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's just the way the motion is worded, I would like to see something about gaps, because we do, there are provisions for senior services in the town of Yarmouth. We don't have a seniors services coordinator like other municipal units, but we, there are services for seniors, safety services for seniors. I just don't know whether they, they are, there are gaps in those services that we might want to look at filling. So is there a way, is that, will that be encompassed if we go forward with the motion as is?
So what I understood the motion to be at the committee of the whole was to look into, basically look into a senior safety officer, look into what the role is typically at the municipal level, how it's funded, you know, and report back to council. If we're talking about doing an audit of, and sorry, I don't mean to be too formal about the word, if we're looking to do some sort of gap analysis of existing services, that's a different, that's different than the approach I would have taken based on my understanding of the previous motion. So I guess I'd want clarity so that we meet the expectations of council. Do you want us to also look at, besides, you know, what a senior safety officer is, how they're funded, and that sort of thing? If you want us to look at the services that are currently available for seniors in the community and give you the information to determine whether or not there's a need, that's additional work, but either one is fine as long as we have clarity.
Can we do both? Can we do both with both changing because it has possibilities around...
As long as we're clear on the intent.
Yeah.
Okay, and the reason that, the reason that I asked that is that I am thinking of the now-filled community policing position, for one thing, that was vacant and would have perhaps resulted in queries going to seniors' safety officers in neighboring municipalities, but that, that may be filled now with that we have a community police liaison, as well as the services that I think are available through Nova Scotia Health. So I just, I don't want to be duplicative, I guess is what I'm saying. That's great, thank you.
It's important anyway to know, to know what we have. It's important to know what we have. Okay, who's next? Go ahead, Counselor Dairs.
Yeah, just a quick comment. My experience with senior safety officers is that they do just that, they identify the gaps, and they link the services that are required. So basically, their job is to make sure that whatever the needs of the senior are, are met. And they rely on other services to do that. They don't do it all themselves, so it's not a one-person job. Anyway, I just throw that in for information.
Oh, that's good, that makes sense. Oh, did you have your light on?
I did.
Yeah.
It's just, it's definitely not the job of the RCMP to do senior safety as a, as a single mandate. So it would be great to look in to see what services are already provided in the town, and that way we're not overlapping, and utilize those as well. But I think when we start looking, we're going to find a need for a senior safety person, possibly, and to talk about what that may look like if we do find that we have that need.
And I think part of what, if it's still done the way, I gotta not say constable there, the way, Counselor, I've said that before, the way Counselor Dairs is saying, then that senior safety officer does that job of connecting the dots. Well, okay, so, so the intention is to figure out both. Does that help you?
Yes, absolutely.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. We like to be helpful. Go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, I think what Counselor, I was going to say constable as well. Counselor Dairs said is right. I think my understanding of that position is to figure out what needs to happen and then reach out to community partners to make it happen. I don't think the people, the two people that are doing it in our neighborhood, in our neighbor municipalities are doing all of that work, but they are doing some. I know we've, you know, without getting into a lot of detail, there was an incident recently that somebody in the municipality needed quite a bit of help, and I know that that person spent a lot of time working with that one person because there wasn't an agency that could help with that. So, but I think what Counselor Dairs said is right. I think it's, I think their job is figuring out what those gaps are and figuring out who in the community could service those needs.
Yeah. Be nice if like social services did stuff like that, since it's a social service. Okay, we good? So it's both, and the CAO is clear on that? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council receive and place on file about the Mariner Center sponsorship proposal.
Okay. Moved and seconded, discussion?
Removing myself from the table.
You are?
Conflict of interest. It's not part of our agenda, it's Mariner's law.
Oh.
Yeah, and it says Mariner Center sponsorship, so probably should say junior A Mariners.
Okay, thanks, Wade. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council allocate up to $2,000 for the 100 Meals Program.
Go ahead.
And my understanding is that that's an if-needed basis?
Yep, it is.
Thank you.
Might be needed because although we did, just so we're aware of this.
Soft opening.
Yeah, we softened the billing, where everybody's not getting reimbursed because programs that already exist and do it, and it's community, it's all community money. So that community money can go to something else that's...
So at the moment, we don't have a lot in that fund?
No, I have $1,000 from Coastal and I think a couple hundred dollars from different donors. And it takes 20, if we did it the way we've done it for the last eight years, it would be $25,000.
Right.
We have three. We have one, but three if we need it.
All right. I know the community really appreciates it. I know, like, my cousin runs the one at Evangel, and they had 70 people on Wednesday, and that was with advertising the night before.
Exactly.
So I believe there's a need there, so maybe we can look into making a push for fundraising in the new year to top that up, because I think, I think it's needed, yeah.
It is definitely needed.
It's hard time to do it now with so many Christmas things, but...
And that's okay.
Yeah.
So let's talk in the new year. And we did have folks, some folks come to the counter today looking for the schedule, and so that's good. Go ahead.
If, yeah, there was a, if there is a coordinated fundraising goal, I think people at this table have quite a reach that we could, we could get that done pretty quick, I think. So just let us know if you need help with that.
Thank you. We'll do that. I'll be reaching out, okay? Do we vote? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council direct staff to develop a term of reference for an advisory committee made up of citizens, organizations, stakeholders, and council members on a monthly process to help inform council through the master plan process and seek information on what we want to accomplish for our citizens in the town of Yarmouth regarding recreational services, and to allow feedback from community and local organizations for recreational services.
That's what happens when they let me write the motions. Sorry, Deputy.
No worries.
Moved and seconded?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor.
Just after our meeting last night, this is, this is separate from the, what we're doing with the project we talked about last night, because I know part of that as well is getting the stakeholders involved. And I know they did say that, you know, council can be part of that step along the way, and I, I know we have a committee for, like, we'd have a recreation advisory committee, but I, it was pretty exciting what we heard last night, and I would like to be part of that as well, just not on having any say, but whenever there's meetings, I'd like to attend as well.
And quite encouraged to get an email about a possible meeting of our other recreation committee with our Modi partners, and hopefully in the new year. And all these, although these two things are separate, I think that one complements the other, and the main thing is that our community members who are volunteering their time have a say in, you know, best practices.
Exactly. Okay, anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council direct staff to investigate what options are available for seniors and communicate that to Y Town Cap.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Nay. Go ahead. Yep, okay, Citizen Advisory Committee is planning advisory. Counselor Cleveland.
Thank you, your worship. Recommended motion that council pass first reading to the proposed development agreement, Attachment One, to allow for a total of six short-term rentals on the subject land. And the subject land is 94 Main Street, 18 Houston Street, 90 Main Street, 16 Houston Street, and 88 Main Street, 14 Houston Street.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary?
Recommended, recommended motion that council direct staff to consider the matter of electric fences as part of the comprehensive municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw review.
Okay, moved. Need a seconder? Counselor Bichera-Lacroix, any discussion? Go ahead.
I've read this, and I, I don't think I understand it. I'm going to be honest, I, is it possible to get kind of a brief summary of what, what we're looking to do here? Because I, I thought I...
We're not actually looking to do anything besides move a talk of electric fences to the MPS and LUB review.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Good, okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
That's all I have.
All righty, so reports for information are all listed there. Oh, there's a lot of reports, that's awesome. Questions for committee chairs? I don't want to do this, but I'm going to. Counselor Dairs, any, any update? Any deer updates? If there aren't, from, from anything, because if one more person says we have to do something about the deer, I think I'm going to scream.
Um...
Just saying where it is.
Yeah, no, where it is, is that, you know, council has approved an application or to start the process, I guess, for approval with the department to develop or to proceed with a mitigation plan. We'll be reaching out to, we've spoken to Lindsay, who's going to organize a meeting for early, early January of the committee. And in the meantime, there's a few other phone calls and consultations have to take place with both the staff of Department of National Resources and, and local suppliers. So that'll be taking place, and we'll have an update after the meeting in January.
Thank you. Yep, go ahead.
I know Counselor Cleveland had mentioned before about some of the university research around the birth control, and I'm just wondering if that, you know, if that can be looked into as well. I'm sure, I'm sure it is being looked into, but I'm just, hearing that that medication or that is made in Canada but can't be used in Canada, it doesn't seem right. And I think if, you know, a combination of different things could work together, but I'd love to see that one explored as well, and I'm sure it is being explored.
Thank you. Counselor Cleveland?
Hi, it is to a degree. As you mentioned, the, the product itself can't be used in Canada by law unless it's being done with a research project. And I had attempted previously to try to find a university that might be interested in taking that on. I had gotten MYTAX. MYTAX is a group, kind of a government group that will fund students who do research if there's a research project to be done, to the tune of a large percentage, and escapes me how much, but it's 75 or more percent. But I haven't managed to find any university that wants to take that on. I had some previous interest in one that I communicated to at Del Housy, but it seems like he's either dropped off the map or is no longer interested. But if you wish, I can, I can certainly start hunting again and see if we can find a university that would be interested in trying it. But again, the only way that it works is if it's a research project, and the research project itself could repuge rewards for other municipalities throughout the country. But that's the way it has to be done, so.
Talk to me about that. Yeah. That, no, no, yeah, good point, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to offer assurances that, that the committee will continue to look for any other mitigation opportunities, including contraceptive, if that becomes available. And I understand that there's one, one contraceptive study being done in British Columbia at this time, so hopefully the results of that will be available to us as well.
Thank you. Okay, any more questions for committee chairs? All good? Okay, approval of invoices, that various invoices be approved for payment. Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Date of next meeting? January the 9th? We're all good?
2025.
2025? Yeah, that's okay. You know what? If somebody tries to try to find the meeting in 2024, then good luck. Good luck, been there. Okay. And we have in camera, I just wanted to say, last council meeting of this year, so to everyone, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, we just, from all of us to everybody, we're just hoping that your holidays are, I guess, close to home and fit in for what you want them to be. So we have...
So, your worship, we can do in camera at the end of the... So, your worship, we can do in camera at the end of the water utility meeting?
All right. Okay. Councillor, deputy?
I just wanted to be, say a big thank you to the community. On Sunday, we'll be rolling out over 250 meals to the doors of people in need, and this is 100% funded by the community, so this will be our fifth year, there's already been over 800 meals given out in the past, and every year, community continues to step up, and although this isn't a council thing, I just think it's a great time to say thank you to the community and it's a great reflection of the place we live. We often get a nasty kind of opinion sometimes of who we are, but we're always there for each other, so a big thank you for everybody and wish everyone a happy holidays and a Merry Christmas.
So the dapper deputy was, was cooking turkeys today.
120 kids.
Yep, exactly. Go ahead.
Just to echo that, I, I think a huge thanks to the deputy for taking that project on, it's a, it's a massive undertaking and thank you for doing that work.
People love it. And then tomorrow night is Team Takeover, so they're doing, they usually have 100 or 120 kids at the Mariners on Main, and, yep, deputy's cooking turkey up for that. Swindled me into doing my dressing, but that, that's okay, that's easier than turkeys and everything else, so I, I love that those kids go there and actually tomorrow night, just because, you know, often we hear, you know, there's nothing for the kids, and when, when you look around the community, but they're doing Budgeting 101. I love that, and I think Chuck Smith's going to be there and do some basketball, plus a turkey dinner, so that's Team Takeover. All right, so, motion to adjourn. Okay, so...